Good evening. It is now 6:30, and I will call to order the Monday, June 13, 2016, Burnsville Planning Commission meeting. Prior to tonight's adoption of the agenda, I would like to speak for a moment from the standpoint, as I was reminded as I walked up to City Hall this evening, that we do have the flags at half-mast in reference to what's happened over the weekend. So I'd like to have everyone stand for a moment. We'd like to have a moment of silence in recognition of the tragedy in Orlando. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Our first item this evening is the adoption of the agenda. And I do, Commissioners, I think you have a... The... I'm sorry, the... We have background. I'm sorry. I apologize. When we get to the minutes, we have updated information. The agenda has been published. Commissioners, do you have any additions to this evening's agenda? None from Commissioners, staff?
None.
Any additions? No additions this evening. Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
So?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Benke, second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. The second item this evening is the approval of the minutes from the May 9, 2016 Planning Commission minutes. And Commissioners, I do think you have updated minutes that have been provided to you this evening that was different than our background. So Commissioners, do you have any changes to the updated minutes? None from the Commissioners, staff? Any changes?
No additional changes.
No additional changes. Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
So moved, Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh, second by Commissioner Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. That brings us to the third item on our agenda this evening. This is a public hearing. Larkin Hoffman representing Carol Ackley for an appeal to allow reasonable accommodation for more than six disabled residents to reside at the group home located at 720 151st Street East. Ms. Garros is our presenter this evening, and as soon as she gets to the podium, Ms. Garros, I will turn the meeting over to you. You have the floor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioners, and to folks that are here this evening for this public hearing. We do have a sign-up sheet out in the hallway for anyone who would like to speak this evening. And for speakers, you would just come up to this podium, and the Planning Commission will ask for you to say your name and address, but we'd also like to have you sign in just so we make sure that we get everybody correctly. The item tonight is public hearing. This is the second time that the similar application has been considered by the Planning Commission. As we had indicated, it's to... It's an appeal to allow reasonable accommodation. This is to federal legislation. And what they are requesting is for one home located at 720 151st Street, which is on the corner. They are requesting two will have eight residents, as opposed to six residents residing at that group home. Just to give a little bit of reference for those at home, we are looking at 720 151st Street East, which is a corner lot. The screen shows the site location, the area zoned R1, which is our single-family zoning district, and it does butt parkland to the north. The screen that is before you is just a wider shot of an aerial photo, again showing Papa Sapa Park, which is to the north, and just a little bit more reference, a little bit wider reference, but basically looking at single-family development for the entire neighborhood. For a little bit of background for those at home and the people attending this evening, the Planning Commission held an initial public hearing on a request on May 9, and that was to allow reasonable accommodation for up to eight residents at two sites, being 716 and 720 151st Street East. Those are two single-family homes and have been operated as group homes in the past, and they were requesting a reasonable accommodation. The Planning Commission heard much testimony that evening, which is reflected in the minutes that you've received and is also on tape and on file with the city. They recommended denial of that application for those two sites, and there were a number of reasons for that recommendation for denial. That was forwarded to the City Council. On May 17, the City Council held another public hearing for that same request. At that meeting, the applicant withdrew the request for the home at 716 151st Street. With that, the City Council felt that the application had been significantly modified because instead of looking at two homes with a campus-type feeling, now we're looking at one home. So they have referred this application back to the Planning Commission for you to hold a second public hearing for what's currently proposed. And again, this is an appeal under the Federal Fair Housing Amendment Act to allow a state-licensed residential facility or group home to have up to eight versus six residents at Woman's Way. That is located at 720 151st Street East. The items that we are looking at is, in the current zoning ordinance, our zoning ordinance is consistent with state statutes as referenced here, and we allow up to six persons to reside in a state-licensed facility, and that's consistent with the state statutes. We are looking at increasing the number of unrelated people that can live in a home. This is based on a zoning ordinance definition of family, from four persons to up to eight persons that are unrelated. Some of the issues that were raised at the last public hearing before the Planning Commission was that there are already other group homes within this neighborhood, four to five, in close proximity. They had indicated that the two homes are not like typical single-family uses, that you have residents and employees that are not allowed to speak to neighbors. There is a great turnover, a large number of folks that have been treated at the facilities over the years, I believe approximately 800, plus or minus. They had... The neighborhood indicated that there is a large amount of trash that's generated for these facilities, issues with some litter, cigarette butts, et cetera, and also congestion on the street related to snow plowing, and then just having excess vehicles from the two facilities out parked in the street, and that those were primarily the issues cited by the neighborhood. Since that time, as I indicated, the application has been amended, and we are looking at only one use, one home, and going from six to eight people. The applicant has worked with the city attorney, community development director, and other staff, and what they have done is they've dropped the one home, so we're dealing with one house, and they have indicated their... That they would be willing to adopt policies for operations at a Woman's Way, and that would include things like in having meet-and-greets with the neighborhood so that they can educate both their staff and the neighbors as to what the group home is, how it's run, establish a contact person, so if residents have questions, et cetera, they'll know who to contact. So that is something that they are looking at doing, setting up an open house during weekday evening in the summer for parking. They have indicated that they... That staff will be required to park in the driveway and not on the street. And then, in addition to that, they're looking at garbage handling to be dealt with as per Burnsville City Code, and they are also willing to establish, again, greater communications between the facility and the neighbors. Just as last time, in an amendment or an appeal, excuse me, the factors to determine if the request is reasonable are, number one, does our quest impose an undue burden or expense on the city? And number two, does a proposed use create a fundamental alteration in the zoning scheme? If the answer to either of those questions is yes, then the application is considered not to be reasonable. The recommendation from staff and the city attorney is that, upon compliance with the specified terms and conditions of the recommendations that we are proposing, that the impacts to the neighborhood are much mitigated over what was requested at the last public hearing. The group home can function very similar to a single-family home, provided that these conditions are met, and the recommendation is for approval subject to the following conditions, and that be the applicant has agreed to these. Number one, the implementation of an operations plan to address neighborhood concerns. That plan should be consistent with the following conditions. Item two, the residents of the group home are not allowed to have personal vehicles. All the employees will be required to park in the garage or driveway, except for when they're doing snow removal within that driveway. Properties shall not be utilized for staff meetings that include staff otherwise not working at the site. Number three, the buildings on-site shall comply with state building and fire codes, and that the applicant will need to provide documentation from the state fire marshal and state building official of code compliance for the eight residents and staff within 60 days and annually going forward, and that would be within 60 days of this application being approved, if that's the case. The owner and operator each agree that they will not open or operate a group home within one-quarter mile of the site, and that's at 720 151st Street. And the last one, that trash containers shall be stored inside the garage or properly screened with opaque screening that you cannot see through, and this is the city code requirement. So with that, those are the recommendations from staff, and we can stand for further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. I appreciate your background information this evening. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Garros? Not everybody can speak at the same time.
I have some questions. Thank you, Deb, and thank you, Chair. Would this accommodation follow the current owner or the property itself?
I'd address that to our city attorney, Mr. Jamnik.
I apologize. Could you rephrase the question, please?
If this accommodation was passed this evening, would this follow the property itself or the nonprofit owner?
The reasonable accommodation would be limited to the current facility. It could be sold. It would run with the land, so it is transferable in that regard, but all the conditions and terms would also run with it.
And is the possibility that if the business were to change ownership, could the clientele also be modified with a change in ownership, from what it sits right now as a gender-specific group home, to something else?
No, in the sense that that would require a change in the state license.
Okay. I've got some more questions. I'm not sure if I should direct these towards the applicant or staff. We received an email today, and there was something in there about overflow parking at Paha Sapa Park. Was this recommended by staff, and is that part of this implementation we have here today?
What Commissioner Workman is referencing is, we did receive an email from Joanne Johnson and also several other neighbors that information has been forwarded to the Planning Commissioners and will be made part of this packet, also forwarded to the City Council. In regards to parking in the park, the park is open for public parking, just like a public street is. From a staff standpoint, we are recommending that they not be allowed to have vehicles and that they be subject to parking within their driveway. Having a business-type of use, parking off-site in a park is not something that we feel is an appropriate use. So that's why the recommendations are include the parking driveway requirement and also the not having vehicles, with the exception of staff.
So is there a recommendation or guidance to, if their driveway is full, to go down the street and park at the park? Is that part of the procedure if we've exceeded or maxed out the parking spots available on the property?
I think what this indicates is that they have to park on the driveway, except in an instance of snow removal. So although the... We don't have staff that actively goes out and monitors who is parking within the parks at various times.
Sure.
So that would be something difficult to monitor, but the applicant has agreed to these stipulations, so we feel that that then will address the situation and should not have overflow or other types of parking from this facility over at the park.
And then my last que... Well, I've got a couple of questions for the applicant as well, but as far as staff considerations, has the city made similar accommodations like the one we see in front of us in the past?
I don't believe so, Mr. Jamnik. This is relatively new legislation and something that has very recently come about, so not that I know of.
The city has not processed a reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act previous, as far as I'm aware of.
We do have one or two conditional use permits that have been processed to allow group homes in the city. Those are very, very old, issued a number of years ago, but yeah, not per this legislation and per this process.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, if this were to pass, are we setting a precedent for future applications similar to this? And would it be safe to assume that every other group home in Burnsville is going to come seeking this type of accommodation?
Let the attorney draw it up.
The question of whether it sets a precedent or not is somewhat difficult. As we discussed at the previous Planning Commission meeting, unlike variance applications where the city may consider and grant variances where the applicant demonstrates a practical difficulty, the federal law in this particular case says you shall grant reasonable accommodation. So as outlined by Ms. Garros, the federal standard mandates us to give leeway to applicants in these types of situations where the request is reasonable. So the federal law, in effect, sets that precedential effect. So if we have other applications in, whether it's for a side yard allowance of a ramp for someone who's wheelchair-bound, or some other physical alteration, we're obligated by federal law to analyze that with the standards that have been specified and grant that allowance if it's reasonable. And that is the basis for the staff and our office recommendation this evening, with the modification of the application into two, from six to eight. Our office and the staff is of the opinion that it will function much like a single-family residential, and we're recommending approval.
Commissioner Workman, do you have any other questions?
Well, I guess the reason for my previous question was that if I was a group home operator in Burnsville, and if this were to pass through, I would pursue the same avenue as what we're dealing with tonight. I don't know if that would be considered a burden on the city or not, and how that would be handled moving forward. And that's just kind of an open-ended question. I don't know if we have an answer to that this evening, but it was something that I thought of thinking about prior to this meeting tonight, so thank you.
There would be a review. There's a public hearing that's required at the Planning Commission and at the City Council for this type, and you would be reviewing each individual application based on the existing site conditions of that particular property. So in that respect, it's kind of like a variance in that you're looking at the individual site characteristics and how those apply. So just by saying, in this particular case, under these particular circumstances, we believe that there is reasonable accommodation for eight, does not mean that just anybody else walking in, we have to approve it under the same things. It all depends on the site, the review, the testimony that you receive, and what the actual operation is.
Commissioners, it is a unique situation. Commissioner Workman, to your point, typically we're dealing with a conditional use permit or an interim use permit or some sort of change in zoning. And quite honestly, all of those above typically do not have some of the federal regulation that has put this reasonable accommodation in front of us. This is my first experience with a reasonable accommodation application. And Commissioner Workman, we would fall back to the... In our background, the two important questions, does it impose undue burden or expense on the city for that one, for that application? And two, does the proposed use create a fundamental alteration in our zoning scheme for the reasonable accommodation? Those are the kind of the two points we must get passed. Commissioner Levy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know whether there's a visitors' day during the year for the applicant to have family visit. I can foresee overflow parking, not staying within the driveway. How would that be dealt with, I guess?
I think that would be a question for the applicant.
You said... I think the unique thing here is that this is a four-bedroom house, therefore we have eight residents. Is it conceivable that a larger house, a five-bedroom house, our house happens to have five bedrooms, because we have a whole bunch of kids, could come and make an application for 10 residents with the same arguments applying?
Yes, I would say yes. Anybody can make an application, and we're required to review it similarly, and you'd have to look at the individual circumstances, and they would have to show why it's reasonable and address these same two factors.
Okay. One of the requirements was that this group could not have another group home within a quarter-mile of 720. In the background material, there was indication that there are at least two, maybe three, other group homes in the neighborhood. I don't know how big the neighborhood is considered. Are they within a quarter-mile of this? Do we know where these are?
I would leave that, again, up to the city attorney to address that.
May I? They're all on the same block. In one city park.
I'm sorry. We'll get to... We need to be able to control the... And so I'll defer to the city attorney at this point, and then we can bring that up. Thank you.
Mr. Chair and commission members, the question of concentration has been a difficult one for the city. The city, for many years, has advocated for greater latitude in looking at concentration and number of facilities within particular areas in the community. Under state law, with the state licensing structure, that is the purview of the State Department of Human Services regarding who gets licensed, how many are in a particular facility as far as that license, and the over-concentration. So in conjunction with the county, that is something that the county and the state look at. It is something that's not part of our land use review. The case law that's been developed in this situation is also along those lines, that that is not a relevant issue regarding the particular application. It is whether or not the individual application can function with reasonable accommodation as much like if it's an individual, single-family home. I know that's a little or no comfort for many of the residents because it has the potential, anyway, of functioning a little bit more like fraternity or sorority role, where you have a multiple number of institutions that are, in effect, residential settings that reenact or recreate kind of an institutionalized neighborhood, which is unfortunate. It is something that has been looked at and discussed, and the Department of Human Services has indicated that is a factor in evaluating their licenses, but it is something that is that policy issue that is continually being discussed at the state level. But for tonight's purposes, it's not on the agenda for the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Levy? Commissioner Benke, you have the floor.
Can I just follow up with that? Would the condition, number four, then, is that legally enforceable? If this particular operator can be restricted to within the quarter-mile, how does it not apply to others?
The restriction is on the current or proposed owner and operator of the facility, and it would run with the lands, so if this is conveyed, it would bind them, but it does not bind a third party. And that was one of the concerns or one of the issues that's raised, is that we could not restrict either the state of Minnesota or another property owner from purchasing property and trying to establish a residential facility. But we can, in our opinion, bind the current applicant along these lines.
Commissioner Benke?
No. No, I just wanted to follow up on that one for you.
Okay. Commissioner Singh, do you have any questions?
You bet, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Ms. Garros, number one, Woman's Way is operating right now. Am I right?
That's my understanding, yes.
And back to what the city attorney is saying, having another home in the same block does not impact this request from the applicant. Am I right? Am I on the right track?
Yes, with the current application. As Ms. Garros... Just to clarify, the reason I hesitate in that response is because of Ms. Garros indicated the previous staff recommendation for denial on the joint application was because the joint facilities operate much like a campus and would have a cumulative impact in their operational activities that's different than a single institutional or residential facility.
Thank you. I'm looking at the conditions here. Resident number two, residents are not allowed to have personal vehicles. All employees shall park in the garage or driveway, except for snow removal. The property shall not be utilized for staff meetings. Now, who is going to police that? Who is going to make sure that they don't have staff meetings there? And the parking... My... Another follow-up to this is, are we saying that this particular building, no one from this building can park on the street? Am I right?
I'll again ask Mr. Jamnik to respond to that.
Mr. Chair and members, that is correct. That's the understanding, is that the residents and the employees from that facility would not have on-street parking rights. That is different than other residents in the area, all of whom can park consistent with the ordinance provisions.
That's very, very different indeed, because we are singling out a building and saying that no one from this building can park on the street. That is different. I think that, for now, that would be it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments before we have the applicant come up? Nothing? Commissioner Benke?
I think this would probably go to... I think this comes back to the word "family" again, and Deb, can you sort of review again Burnsville's definition of "family"? And Deb, can you sort of review again Burnsville's definition of "family"?
The definition of "family" includes people that are related by blood or marriage, and then up to four unrelated individuals living within a single dwelling unit.
Sure. And then in a group home, it's six or fewer as defined and/or licensed by the state of Minnesota.
Yes.
Okay. And the guidance that we've gotten from Department Adjustment, Department of Justice and Department of Housing and Urban Affairs under the Fair Housing Act appears to require us to treat this group home as a family because of their, their issues, their...
Because their status.
Disability, thank you.
Disability status.
Is that a fairly succinct way to say it?
Yes, that's correct. If you, if you recall the guidance that was provided, the help that was, the illustrations were, were interesting in sense that they're the two extremes. You know, one, one example is very minor, and the other is a large-scale nursing home or hospital.
Yeah, they didn't help us with the in-between one.
That's correct. The gray, the gray area is left to discretion and for, for local governments to struggle with. The extremes that were offered in the guidance are relatively simple. On the low end, you'd say, yes, you have to give a side yard to allow a ramp or those types of things. But on the other hand, a 40-person, or 40-patient nursing home would not qualify, would not be deemed reasonable. Well, here, we analyze all the facts and circumstances of the situation. You look at the housing that the city offers throughout the community, what the nature of our housing is. It's a very diverse composition within the city. Single-family residents, it's not just a retirement community. Those types of factors, that that all leads to the recommendation and the analysis that the Planning Commission has to engage in.
Sure. And then, just to sort of elaborate a little farther, the, the eight people that we're being asked to allow are the ones that have the disability. How do we count the staff person in that? I mean, because obviously, there's this, I mean, the documentation all says that there's staff person on 24 hours a day. Presumably, and the applicant can probably answer this better in terms of the detail, but that person is probably awake during the day and asleep during the night. This is not an eight-person facility, it's a nine-person facility or more, depending on how many staff members. But that's not being discussed here?
Well, Mr. Chair and members, it in fact is. It's part of the overall analysis that's been engaged in both previously and again for this evening of what the staffing level is. As indicated by the neighbors, the parking is primarily employee-based, because the residents do not generally have vehicles. It would be visitors to the facility or employees that are coming there that would pose the vehicular issue. The fact that there are employees there in the analysis from a staff perspective works both ways. There might be more bodies there and more people, but with the greater supervision, the impact on our law enforcement community is actually reduced, because one of the problems we've had with other facilities, if there's someone who leaves the facility and there's only one employee on, on staff, then, then the natural result is a 911 call.
Sure.
If you have more staff, they can handle more things on-site, reduces the chance that they will call for help outside. So, you have a trade-off, it's more bodies there, but more, more oversight. And that's not just with regard to this facility, it's all of the facilities or all of the uses within, within the community. So, in that respect, some of those factors have varying impacts in the analysis.
Thank you, that helps. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner, Commissioner Levy, you have one additional question before we bring the applicant up?
We're imposing a quarter-mile radius around this facility. The 716, I understand, is being sold.
That's not part of our...
I understand that.
Okay.
But if, let's assume that a different group chooses to purchase 716. We come back to the same situation, where we could be asked to expand to eight individuals, non-related individuals, within the quarter mile, and then they get their own quarter mile, maybe. It still looks to me like the possibility is open, if we just limit it to a quarter mile for this operator, that we can still fill up the block with group homes. Am I missing something?
Mr. Chair, good. Just the, the response would be that the state licensing entity, the Department of Human Services, is obligated to look at that issue. And even for a family or a residential facility which comprised of six residents or six patients, that notification would come to the city, and the city would have an opportunity to respond and point out to the Department of Human Services that for whatever reason their license review did not catch it, that the city already has a facility next door. So, that would be the mechanism by, by which that initial licensing determination by the state would take into account the concentration in the particular area. That's not to give anybody an assurance that the state wouldn't still issue a license, but the process is at the state level for that additional license outside of the applicant or current owner.
Thank you.
Commissioner, that is a risk.
Yeah, right.
Yes, Commissioner Benkey?
So, that follows, again, under the guidance we received from the DOJ regarding the over-concentration of group homes, that it, if a neighborhood came to be comprised largely of group homes, that could adversely affect individuals with disabilities and would be inconsistent with the objective of integrating persons with disabilities in the community. So, that's where, so theoretically, the, the state and county would be, that's what they'd be looking at, that's what they'd be using to help decide?
Under the current framework, that is how it's supposed to be done and how it is being done. Whether it's done to the satisfaction of the city, the answer is no. The city has, like I indicated, for many years advocated for a bigger role in making sure that that situation does not occur.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. At this time, I would invite the applicant up, and I have to do a better job at this. We're going to ask you to please give us your name, make sure we get that recorded appropriately, and then give us your address. Good evening, sir. Welcome back.
Certainly. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, appreciate this opportunity to address you again in a slightly different request. With me is Carol Ackley of Ackley Real Estate, the owner and former operator of the, A Woman's Way. And also in the audience is Brian Salmon, who is with River Ridge, the current operator. And he's got staff here as well, who can address questions if I cannot. I'll make a couple of brief remarks, and then I'll attempt to address the questions that you've asked, and as I've said, others can, can help me if I can't adequately do that for you. So, first of all, as staff noted, we are at the City Council meeting in May and withdrew the application for a Lotus House to essentially talk, to focus on A Woman's Way and the opportunity to review this reasonable accommodation without the concern about the two facilities. And so, with that, the City Council directed us back here so we could work with you, work with staff, to come up with reasonable conditions of approval to attempt to address the concerns of, of the residents and perhaps the city as well. In doing that, we came up with the operations plan. It's a set of policies that you saw on the screen. Those are policies that have been adopted and are, I think, already implemented or at least being implemented by A Woman's Way, regardless of this application. That, that policy plan has gone into place and is being implemented. The second thing we worked on were the conditions of approval. Tonight, we believe it is correct. I think they've given you a good, good outline and guidance of the federal law. We also understand that this is your first encounter with this federal law, and so it's a little different than a typical land use application. And so, we're happy to work through that with you. And that's certainly been the position of my client, Carol Ackley, and her successor, Brian Salmon, is to work through these issues, not to discount them. I think it's important to keep in mind that the reasonable accommodation is, as staff has noted, going from six to eight residents. And so, without that reasonable accommodation, the use is permitted as a matter of right under state law that was outlined. And so, in going to additional residents, if you will, the city then gains oversight, the oversight that has gone on here for the last several weeks, the conditions of approval that have been discussed with the applicant and, and the attached plan. And so, those two additional residents really create the opportunity for a dialogue with staff, oversight by the city, and certainly the opportunity to work with residents to see that they're satisfied with, with the operations. So, we think that's a positive thing. The questions about parking, first of all, I confirm with Mr. Salmon that there is not overflow parking in the park. The parking is to occur, unlike, as, as noted by your commissioners, the parking is to occur within the driveway. And so, that's a, that's a concession, if you will, over the, the normal operation on Burnsville city streets. In addition, the parking for staff would occur within the driveway. Now, there are staff that are on-site that meet with residents, and there are occasionally staff that come from off-site that, that meet one-on-one with residents. All that parking would be required to occur within the driveway. And then finally, there was a question raised about visitors, family visits perhaps. Those occur at the, at the outpatient location, the River Ridge outpatient location, where there's adequate parking for those family members. And so, family visits do not occur at this location, and I don't believe they have occurred at this location. So, that's not a change, but that's just really a clarification to address the commissioners' questions. So, those are my comments, my, my brief answers to your questions. We're certainly appreciative of all the time that staff has taken. We're appreciative of the City Council's direction that we come back here and kind of work it out, if you will. And we do think we've got a good framework now for going forward.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Commissioner Levy, you have them?
Commissioner Workman asked for us earlier, so go ahead.
Commissioner Workman, you have the floor.
Thank you for the clarification. Just to bounce back off the parking issue, in that email that we did receive, there was some photos attached to it with, looks like six cars and one on, at the Woman's Way house, and then maybe two at the Lotus House. And I drove by this afternoon, and I didn't take an exact count, but there was a full lot of cars. And the reason why I asked that kind of reflects back to Commissioner Benkey's question relating to how many staff are at the house on a typical day. And I guess that's my question.
Sure. I'm going to ask Mr. Brian Salmon, who's the current operator, to address those questions.
Sir, when you get to the podium, please give us your name, and then make sure that we have your, have your address.
Sure, Brian Salmon.
Welcome this evening.
Welcome. Brian Salmon, I'm the president for River Ridge, 7028 Kellogg Avenue, Edina.
Good evening, thanks for coming this evening, sir.
Yep. So, the, the staffing pattern on a daily basis, there's generally two staff on duty at any given time, except for overnights. The overnights are awake overnights, so they don't sleep there, no one stays overnight and, or no one sleeps there overnight. During the, during the week, there are different times where there's staff coming in and staff having to leave, so there might be more. There might be times where supervisors or other people are coming to visit and see what's going on. There's times where there might be some therapeutic groups or something like that going on, where there's, so there's people there at the house.
Okay. Commissioner Workman?
The only other question I had for you, and thank you, Mr. Salmon, for coming tonight.
Sure.
So, in our, in our first meeting, I believe it's somewhere throughout the discussion, it was indicated that this house was for sale and that it was for sale, and you purchased it?
No, I haven't purchased it at this point.
Okay. Is the property for sale or the business, the nonprofit for sale currently right now?
Is the...
Is A Woman's Way currently for sale or in the middle of a business transaction?
The business transaction is the one that when we, when I purchased the business, River Ridge, the condition was is that the, all the zoning things were taken care of. So, that's what we're doing right now.
Commissioner, that's what prompted this, the actual transaction, the business transaction?
Okay, I wanted to reiterate that. So, that transaction is contingent on the result of this outcome?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes, is it Mr. Steen who is the, who spoke earlier?
Bill Griffith.
Okay, because you didn't give your name at first.
I didn't.
And I asked very nicely.
You mentioned something that I had not heard in the discussion, that going from six to eight gives, now gives the city oversight on, on this, with these conditions, as opposed to just having six, we don't have oversight. I'm not sure how, what that all means. Can that be explained, please?
Commissioner, Commissioner Levy, through the application process to go from six to eight, and this reasonable accommodation allowed the city to put together this negotiation, and that's what we mean by additional oversight. The, the negotiations that have taken place between the applicant and the city is what was, has taken place because of that.
Okay.
Okay?
I understand, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, for the record, Bill Griffith, representing the applicant, 8300 Norman Center Drive, Bloomington.
We all know you, but as for the record...
I just want to be very consistent with the requirements.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levy, any other questions? Commissioner Benkey?
Thank you. Mr. Griffith, I think as long as you're there, what Commissioner Levy was just talking about, the, the change from six to eight, I think it's pretty clear that it wasn't done to benefit the city. And one, the one thing I haven't heard yet through the whole way is what the rationale that eight benefits Woman's Way more than six does, because that is also part of what we're supposed to be looking at here. So, the fact that they want to go above the six that's allowed as a group home, what, where's the benefit to Woman's Way on that?
Mr. Chair and commissioners, I'm going to answer in a kind of a step-by-step way, because I think it's, it's a little more complicated than just saying, here's the benefit. First of all, as we've testified before, and I won't belabor the point, there's huge demand right now. And hopefully someday, there will be no demand, and we can close these facilities and move on, but I suspect that won't be the case. So, the demand is really the driver. The demand is what we're trying to address, and yet, a Lotus House is closed, and so we, we lose, you know, six to eight beds there. So, the, the benefit is a critical mass, the critical mass to be able to staff the facility, to have two people there by day, one person at night. If you start to, you know, if you start to do the math, you can't, you can't really staff a place that, that has four or six. You really need to have eight or more in a facility like this. Now, we have four bedrooms, I'm not suggesting that there's going to be more, the request is for eight. I think as noted, if someone had additional bedrooms in another facility, they may, they might ask for 10. To be clear, this application is for eight, but it is a critical mass of residents working together. It not only benefits from a staffing standpoint, but it benefits the residents, because as they come in, there are residents who've been there longer, they can help with their program, they can essentially be mentors. So, the further you cut that down, the less opportunity there is for stability in the facility, appropriate staffing, and then appropriate mentorship for residents. And many of the folks who showed up at the prior two hearings testified to that point.
Thank you, sir, that helped a lot.
Sure.
Deb, was the, was the email, the information in the email regarding the parking shared with the applicant, to your knowledge?
That I do not know.
Yes, it was. Staff provided it this afternoon.
Would, I presume, Mr. Salmon be able to address that? I'm presuming that his operation was in place at this particular moment?
Correct. He is, he is currently operating the facility.
Okay. Would he be able to answer why there were so many vehicles parked on both driveways?
I'm sure he'll take a shot at it.
Thank you, sir.
Again, Brian Salmon, 7028 Kellogg, Edina, Minnesota. Okay. I believe the data that occurred, there was a, a situation where staff were there, and there were also other people there at the same time. So, there were therapeutic groups going on, there were outside therapists, sometimes there's social workers or something like that who stopped by.
Sure.
So, I think that was the situation on, I believe it was the eighth?
It speaks of a Wednesday, which presumably was the most previous recent one.
Okay.
I can add to that.
Okay.
Sorry?
I can add to that.
Anything I can hear would be great.
Carol Ackley, 14702 Oak Run Lane, Burnsville. We are, we are in the process of getting ready to deal with Lotus House, and so we're moving furniture in and out. So, we had some movers there, we had a real estate agent there.
Okay.
In the, in the Lotus House parking lot.
Okay.
So, that was, I mean, that was just the day we were there.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that.
And I was there, my car was there too.
Sure, I appreciate that. Thank you, Carol. So, that was obviously a one-time issue, but, you know, what would be the typical level of traffic? of traffic on a day where you have staff there, plus you have the groups? I mean, this is not in a normal Wednesday meeting time. So, what would be typical for parking?
Probably...
I'm sorry, typical worst case?
Typical worst case. Four cars, maybe five cars, because the driveway's a little wider.
Sure.
But, that is usually probably where it would be on a typical case.
Sir, and that would include probably the van that is used to transport residents?
Yeah.
Commissioners, I would say that I've driven by the home three times in the past two weeks. I did not experience anybody at 716. Every single time I drove by, the driveway for 716 was empty. But in many cases, the driveway at 720 did have four to five vehicles in it at the time that I drove by.
Sure.
Commissioners, Benke, I'm sorry, you have another question for the applicant?
I want to ask what the disposition of Lotus House is going to be, but I'll restrain myself, because it really doesn't apply at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
I'm sorry, a couple of questions on the operations.
On the operations plan?
Yes.
Okay.
What I'm seeing here, I can see there's a, appears to be a goal of becoming better neighbors, which I think everybody got from the discussion previously. I realize that, you know, clearly, confidentiality is part of this. The open house, is that simply designed to try to help the neighbors feel more comfortable? I mean, where are we going? I mean, they're obviously not going to meet the patients. And that's, I've learned that's not part of what this is going to be. Respect to the comment that they're being integrated into the facility, it isn't into the city, it isn't while they're here. It's, they're coming from the city prior to, the county, and they're going back into it after. Is that pretty clear? I mean, is that what you're trying to do?
Integrating people in and out.
Yeah, so it isn't really while they're in the facility that they're becoming part of the community. It's, they're there before, and they're there after, but the community itself has to be fairly protective of them, and that's just the way the system works.
Yeah. I mean, for, within reason, I mean, the residents can go and walk up and down the street, they can go over to the park, they can talk with people. So, it's not like they're in a restriction, they're just, we just have to protect, because most of them are vulnerable adults, we have to protect.
I understand the goal, I'm very supportive of the goal. My struggle sometimes comes from how things are being presented, and understanding, you know, understanding the details, I think, is where I think a lot of us have to go in order to be comfortable with something here. I think, I think I'm pretty clear on things right now. Thank you, sir.
Deb, I want, just to touch on those, and I have a couple of questions. The goal of the operating plan, and number one and number two, are simply to address some of the issues we had from the standpoint of the neighbors, because the neighbors will not be meeting anybody that's actually living in the home. It's a way for the neighbors to have a touch and a feel, and understand who's going to be running the home, no different than if a neighbor were to meet a neighbor and know who's responsible. So, I appreciate the negotiations there with one and two from a standpoint that, and with number five, that the neighbors have a contact, someone they can reach out to with your company outside of the people operating the home, so they can, they can work through this. Commissioners, I also want to try to point out that in many cases, these conditions that are in front of us, no different than anything else that we act on as a planning commission, typically there's not going to be a city official going out and looking for these violations. There will be, these are the rules that are put in place from a parking standpoint and from a trash standpoint, and if there is a complaint from the neighborhood, then it will follow through our normal process. And if something here is not addressed through the process, then it puts this, Mr. Jamnik, I want to make sure, if there are several failures in our recommendation from a standpoint of parking, or, and if it follows through our process, then it does put this reasonable accommodation at risk?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that point with everybody this evening. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I have one more follow-up question.
Yes.
And I don't want to come off as a nitpick, but because this is a unique circumstance, I just want to get this in the universe. For number two on the recommendation, all employees shall park in the garage or driveway except for snow removal. Going back to our previous parking, what we were just talking about, Mr. Salmon, that there are other people that come to the house, doctors, support groups, people that are not directly employed by a Woman's Way. That, number two, is very specific, but if we have the likelihood of outside services coming, this is not applying to those outside services. Correct?
That's a clarification point, at some point I was going to ask. I mean, it's the difference between employees, or if you, if you have an outside service, or someone that's going to come in and perform a service, at that point, they can park in the street, or is this limited to, and I guess somebody can answer this question, it was my impression from number two, is that any, anybody associated with the home, whether it was an employee or someone there to provide a service, they were to be required to be able to park in the driveway or in the garage, and not in the street?
Mr. Chair and members, no, I don't believe so. I believe that the way it was drafted, it would be limited to employees of the facility.
Okay.
So that if they had a UPS or FedEx truck doing a delivery, for instance, that temporary street parking would be allowed, just like any other single-family residence or business within the community.
Okay.
The idea there was the, one of the concerns that was raised at the planning commission was it is a corner lot, the site clearance and the snow removal issues, winter parking, and access at that intersection was pronounced. So, I believe the logic was that longer-term regular parking would be restricted, but short-term parking, consistent with our ordinances, overnight parking, and those types of things would all be, you know, the same for them as for anybody else. But on an ongoing basis, the employees and residents would not be engaged in on-street parking.
Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Levy.
Number one, the implication of an operations plan attached, I've been looking through with what we were given. I don't see an attachment.
Commissioner Levy, it was in our background, it says, "River Ridge Policies for Operations of the Woman's Way." Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair and members, I should also clarify that the terms and conditions that the planning commission will recommend, and the city council will eventually adopt, if approval is granted, would be incorporated in the subsequent. This is dated May 31st, and so, certain things like trash management or some of those parking, anything that's done that would be, change that. So, if there's someone flags an inconsistency between the operations plan and the recommendation, recommended terms and conditions, that's the reason, there's two different dates on it, and eventually they would be reconciled.
Okay. Sure. Thank you. This does require a public hearing, so before I open the public hearing, I do want to remind, I want, in respect for everyone's time this evening, the five commissioners, including myself that are here, we're the five people that were here for the planning commission on May 9th. We have all of the background information in our background from the standpoint of that meeting and all the testimony. We do have all of the information in the background that was given at the planning commission, so I can assure you, we have all of that information. So, in respect for everyone's time this evening, I would appreciate anyone speaking this evening. I would like, if you could, keep it to something that is, that has not been covered in the past. We are highly aware of all of the previous issues that have been noted, so I would appreciate that. This does require a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience who would like to come up and give us some new additional thoughts. We would appreciate your comments this evening. Ma'am, please step up to the podium, and please give us your name, and make sure we can record that, and then give us your address.
Sure. My name is Joanne Murray Johnson. I live at 717 East 151st Street. I've lived there for over 38 years.
Ms. Johnson, I want to, just real quickly, I want to, we do have, it was, I want to make sure I'm not missing any, you're the background information that we got today, correct?
Yes.
Just so the Commissioners know.
I know, I missed that email.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
First of all, I have to tell you, I'm a little nervous.
That's okay.
So, I hope you guys aren't going to eat me or anything.
I'm not very mean.
Okay? First of all, I just would like to respond to the parking issue as of last Wednesday. Sorry, did not realize that the two cars at 716 were in relation to moving. We understand those sorts of things, that always happens. However, we are under the impression that there are regularly scheduled Wednesday meetings, and we have noticed large volumes of cars at that time. And I believe that the picture I took, even though it was kind of hard to see, actually indicated that there were eight vehicles in the 720 residence. They were parked three across, and in some cases, three deep. It was a little difficult to tell. As we mentioned earlier, I did send you an email earlier today with concerns that a group of the neighbors have over this request for change, and I'm not going to repeat those comments. Instead, I would now like to specifically address the two factors that determine if this request is reasonable. And first of all, you have to understand that neither I nor any of the people that I am representing are lawyers. We just try to use some common sense, and we read things, and we try to interpret them. So, that's where our comments are coming from. So, the first factor was, does this request impose an undue burden or expense on the city? And we can't really address this, the city needs to. However, we are asking that when you answer this question, you answer it not only as regards 720 East 151st Street, but also the entire city of Burnsville, since similar requests will be made in the future. Please weigh all of the costs associated with group homes, because you are setting precedent with your decision. Second issue was, does the proposed use create a fundamental alteration in the zoning ordinance? A comment was made at the previous planning commission meeting that this zoning alteration occurred when the house was first purchased about 10 years ago. We disagree. Although it was operating as a group home, it complied with the ordinance covering group homes operating in a residential neighborhood, ordinances put in place by the city to address the needs of all neighborhood residents. Based on comments that were made both tonight and at previous meetings regarding this property, it appears that one of the primary reasons for this request is a business need for profitability. If this request is allowed, our neighborhood will in effect be changed from a resident-focused neighborhood to one that is driven by business needs. This is a fundamental alteration in the zoning ordinance. The neighbors that I represent this evening all moved into this neighborhood before this home was converted to a residential home, residential group home 10 years ago. We have lived in our homes from 13 years to over 40 years. We purchased with the expectation that we would be living in a residential neighborhood for as long as we stayed in our homes. We are asking that you retain the residential neighbor, the residential nature of this neighborhood and deny the request.
Sir, please give us your name, and then give us your address.
My name is Mark Sen. Address is 708 152nd Street East in Burnsville.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time this evening.
I've lived in the neighborhood for 23 years, and I'm in a unique position to comment on this, in that the first group home to be created occurred one year after I moved in, and construction began to convert the home next door to us, which has been a, residents have been absolutely no issue whatsoever. However, it's owned by a corporation, and when that corporation changes hands, policies and people handle things differently. We had, we have had a fence that never seems to actually get repaired, lawn care that is very sporadic, and weeds that might get treated once a year, so forth. Mailbox gets run over by a truck backing out, and usually gets repaired, except for this last time around with the new company, they said, well, it could have been any one of these trucks, pointing the fingers at the other group homes. Three, and actually a fourth group home not too far away, three group homes, this one first to my direct east. Then, a number of years later, another group home opened two doors away, in, at which time ambulances were coming every two or three nights. And we were told by the police, as they took people away, this is not, this is not a violent, there's no violent people here. But then they start taking them away in handcuffs. Completely blew out five of our long-term neighbors, one of the homes which was the subject of a DEA raid, and the others have been turning over with foreclosures and has destabilized the neighborhood. And so, now, this third one I didn't know about until I saw the, just recently, you know, over the past few years, the cars and so forth. And I'd just like to say, I keep hearing the term "facility." I hear professionals coming onsite, we can't really, we have really specified exactly how many that might be, parking needs. This is a business, similar to the business next door that moved into, next door to my home when I was a young newlywed, with, and like that, I have to have discussions with people, say, will you please take care of the yard, will you please take care of the fence? We can't afford it, is what I get. I end up having to remove trees, remove stumps, and do maintenance on things, because it's a business, and we can't afford to do that. So, I'd just like to say, this word "facility" keeps coming up. Our neighborhood, if you let this happen, and there's three, I'm sorry, four or five eight-person homes potentially, how is that different than the 40-person facility you said is unacceptable for a family neighborhood? So, I'd like to say, I do not find this reasonable. I find it very unreasonable use of our neighborhood, and feel like we, the term "facility" drives home my point. And my question would be to you, is at what point, if currently we're at 20% of the homes in that area are allowed to be, potentially going to be group homes, at what point in time do you rezone our neighborhood? And at what point in time do you condemn that neighborhood and pay us a market price for our homes?
Thank you for coming, sir. Anyone else? Sir, please step up to the podium and give us your name, and then your address. Thank you.
My name is John Dolquist. I live at 6620 Jardine Path West in Rosemont.
Thank you, Mr. Dolquist. What can we do? Please give us your thoughts this evening.
I would like to read something for you, which is basically just an excerpt from the joint statement of the Department of Housing and Urban Development and Department of Justice regarding reasonable accommodations under the Fair Housing Act. It's only, it's like a long document, I'm only reading this, it's very short.
We do have some of that in our background, sir. We do have some of that in our background, sir.
Basically, in a nutshell, and this is not the law itself, but this is their joint statement on the law and how it applies to reasonable accommodations. And it states that, okay, any person engaged, who must comply with the act's reasonable accommodation requirements. Says, "Any person or entity engaging in prohibited contact, i.e. refusing to make reasonable accommodations in rules, policies, practices, or services when such accommodations may be necessary, to afford a person with a disability equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling may be held liable unless they follow an exception to the act's coverage." It also goes on to state that courts have also applied the act to state and local governments, most often in the context of exclusionary zoning or other land use decisions, and cites City of Edmonds versus Oxford House Incorporated and Project Life v. Glendening as two case law subjects that were, that apply in that regard. I would say that you're, I would almost have to say you're pretty much required. If the federal, if the federal definition of reasonable accommodation for a single-family dwelling is two residents per bedroom and the house has four bedrooms, I would almost say that you're pretty much required by law to grant that reasonable accommodation exception to this residence as a result. And I would say that the federal definition of reasonable accommodations outweighs any that have been spoken in this room.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mark Sen, 708 152nd Street East, Burnsville, Minnesota. That statute and that paragraph is fine. Pertains to the group home that lives, that is next to my home in that it's a residence, it's where they live, they do act as a family and so forth. It is not a facility for medical treatment. They go every day to their jobs and to their treatment in an actual facility that has actual parking, room for the doctors and the professionals to help them. They don't come to them and need a facility in the residential neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening that would like to address the body? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, your thoughts? Okay, I guess I'll start. Commissioners, this is a very unique situation. I try to look at these things no differently than we do any other, any other application. I think we have to look at this from a standpoint of the law and what our, what we have control of as the Planning Commission and what we do not. There's a lot of things that were brought up this evening that involve many other homes and other things in the neighborhood. And as our counsel has pointed out, the city has advocated for a long time for the state to give us additional control, which they have chosen to not give us from a standpoint of density and concentration. Really what we must focus on is, are the, are the legal that's put in front of us this evening from the standpoint of the two factors of undue expense to the city and then zoning changes is really what we, we as a, as a body can focus on. I do think that a great collaboration was made in many cases to try to address neighborhood concerns from the standpoint of parking and other things that do happen associated with this. I would also tell people that there are other ways to solve problems with, no different than I have, it's an opportunity if someone doesn't mow their lawn near my home. We do have city ordinances that, that can be called upon for them to be able to fix those. The city has ordinances based around maintenance of homes, siding, fences. We have other avenues to try to address those. So it's not the funnest thing to do, but it is a process that the city has in place. So with that being said, I would, I will be voting for the approval or to recommend to the city council per the, per the staff recommendation. Commissioners, Commissioner Benke.
Chair, should we be checking with the applicant on their ability to address the recommendations? Presumably, they've seen them, but.
Commissioner, we can certainly have the applicant come back, back up. And I, we were told in our background that there was a collaboration between the current operator and the city.
Right, and as the city attorney mentioned, whatever we do here should be incorporated, whether it affects their plan or, especially as it affects their plans. So basically, there's a number of items in the staff recommendation that would change the operations plan. And I guess wanted to make sure that there was or was not acceptance of those items, specifically.
Commissioner Benke, where you believe there's a conflict between the five recommendations and the operating plan?
Correct.
Okay.
And what I'm trying to make sure is that the applicant is okay with those five recommendations modifying the operations plan.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, yes, the applicant is aware of the five conditions, has discussed those with the staff and the city attorney, and is accepting those conditions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benke.
Yep. This is obviously a hard struggle because answering those questions, the two questions that the city council will have to factor into as well, it's, there's not a black and white answer to either one of them. In this case, the definition of undue burden of expense would need to be weighed against the benefits. And in my case, I see a benefit for the facility, realizing it's a facility and perhaps being run as a facility and not as a group home. Fundamental alteration in the zoning scheme, quite honestly, I don't see it, given that we're required by federal law to treat eight unrelated people as a family. They've basically taken away my ability to find the issue with that. So in this case, I'll be voting for it as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Benke. Commissioners Singh. I guess we'll just go down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have given a lot of thought to this application. When I came on the, many years ago, on the Planning Commission, one of the commitments I made to the city council and myself, I'll do whatever it takes within the law to build and maintain strong residential neighborhoods. This application puts me in a spot where I have to go back and rethink my, that commitment. I just want to get to the point very quickly. I respectfully disagree with staff that the conditions have been mitigated with the arrangements, the recommendations that are being made for the, for the approval or the recommendation to the city council of this application. I don't think some of these things can be policed. If they are going to be policed, the operations plan, the parking, then it will cost the city. I would agree with Joanne Johnson when she said, we are also setting the standards for other neighborhood homes that will get applications from people for the same accommodation to be made. I understand the requirement and the federal accommodation laws, and I tend to be swayed because of that. But when I go back to my commitment I made and when I listen to people who live in that neighborhood, I just, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, cannot, cannot vote to recommend this application.
Thank you.
And I'm done. There are two questions that were posed to us that we need to consider. If, number one, if this application would impose an undue burden or expense to the city, to me, it's obvious yes, because not only this property at 720 151st Street East, but others will, will come to our attention that we will need to provide probably the same accommodation. The second one is, does the proposed use create fundamental alteration in the zoning scheme? Yes, it does. In the first place, so many homes are, group homes are in the same block. I don't understand how it happened, but they're there. And to add another one, I cannot support. So, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, reluctantly, I will have to vote against the recommendation of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Workman.
Thank you, Chair. I also echo Commissioner Singh's points. I don't disagree with the intent of the purpose of what this home does. I think that is a good thing. But I do see that it creates a burden on the city moving forward with this to pass. Because if we allow it here, the scenario for this application to come again with another home and another nonprofit organization in the future exists. And I also will not be recommending approval tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Workman. Commissioner Levy, your thoughts?
I too am conflicted. The second item about the, that we have to consider, the cost to the city, we don't know. We were not given any information as to what the incremental cost of a group home anywhere in Burnsville is compared to a single-residence, normal family that we would consider a family home. That information was not given to us, so we can't make that determination. Do we meet the requirement or not meet the requirement? I'm not so concerned about having a precedent. We've already got group homes. Going from six to eight, to me, is not a significant change in the zoning. But because of the unknown cost to the city, I have to go along with voting nay as I, I guess, nay, leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Any other comments? Commissioner Benke, would you make a motion?
I would. I would like to make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the city council for the item as presented with the, hang on a second here, for the, hang on, let me find my front page. I got it here too. Thank you. No, that's not the page I was looking for. Here we go. Actually, it was, wasn't it? I'd like to recommend approval for the item allowing reasonable accommodation for more than six disabled units to reside at the group home located at 720 151st Street East with the five staff recommendations as written.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion on the floor. I will second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And staff, do you have the division of the house? And the motion fails. I'm sorry. We, the motion that was, that was passed, do we need an additional motion for?
I think you should have a recommendation for.
Yeah, we do need a motion to the city council.
For a denial. Okay. I'm sorry.
I would move that we, the Planning Commission recommended the city council denial of this request.
Chair, on the point of order.
Yes, Commissioner Singh.
The fact that the motion was voted on and failed means that we are recommending to the city council denial. So I don't think we need another motion.
No, I don't mean, it's just.
That's, that's my point of order.
Mayor, Chair and Commission members, right now, the commission is silent because the motion that was made was for approval or recommending approval. It doesn't include, the motion did not say, if fails, we will recommend the converse. So you should have a motion recommending denial.
That's fine. Then I second, I second Commissioner Levy's motion.
So I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Levy, and I have a second by Commissioner Singh. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And once again, the staff has the division of the house.
Thank you.
Commissioner, or, I want to say Commissioner Jamming. Okay, thank you very much. This information will go in front of the city council on June 21st, so. Thank you very much. We do have a second and third item on our agenda this evening, so I'm not sure. We do need to give the next applicant our complete focus, so I will recess the meeting just for a few moments while we clear the chamber and start with our second application this evening. For a conditional use permit to allow a sports performing training center at an existing building located at 3250 County Road 42 West. Presenting this evening is Ms. Dean. Dean, you have the floor.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. We do have pitch-to-pitch here. Representing the business is CJ Woodrow. He has an existing business within the city of Burnsville, came forward a couple of years ago for a conditional use permit within an industrial area. He's since moving the business, proposed to move the business to a different location. This particular location is located off of County Road 42, is surrounded by I-3 industrial. Here's another overview of the site location, again, just north of County Road 42 West, west of Burnsville Parkway and sort of south of the Judicial Road Loop there. This gives you an overview of the site zoomed to a closer view. The, the particular building acts as an industrial office, warehouse building. There's currently eight tenants within the building. Their office hours range typically from eight to 5:00 p.m. The pitch-to-pitch business, which is a sports performance training for baseball and softball, specialized training, batting, pitching, coaching, tryout sessions. Their primary business runs from the evening, 5:00 p.m., I believe, till 10:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday, so opposite of a majority of the businesses within the building. They also operate on Saturday and Sunday as well, which most of the businesses would be closed during those hours and days. This gives you an overall view of the floor plan for the different businesses. Pitch-to-pitch would occupy the very north corner of the building. The, there is a gymnastics use within the south portion of the building. And again, kind of your office, warehouse, distribution mix occupying the, the majority of that western portion of the building. They're occupying approximately 10,000 square feet of that 94,000 square foot building. They're occupying approximately 10,000 square feet of that 94,000 square foot building. The parking for the particular site onsite, there's about 158 parking spaces. The particular use would occupy, I believe, code would require, let me go to my notes. City code based off of their use would be 44 parking stalls, and this particular business has 58 parking stalls dedicated to their particular use, again, with the off-peak uses. Staff feels it's a good use and good mix for the site. Sports performance training centers do have specific guidelines for industrial buildings. I do want to point those out. If, if the site is, or if the use is within a mixed user, mixed tenant building situation, we have guidelines that talk about that the, the two mixes need to coincide or interact well together, and that the parking and loading requirements aren't disrupted by the sports performance training center moving in. Sometimes with sports performance training centers, there's special events, maybe spring tryouts, for example. So, if that's the case, we would recommend that the, that the user work with either the existing property owner to make sure that parking is accommodated onsite, or work with a neighboring property owner to have a joint parking agreement. In this case, no special events are proposed as part of the application, but if that were to occur in the future, we would recommend that that is something that is, is worked out. Any signage, this is typical with any development project, also highlighted with sports performance training centers, but all signs need to meet city code, pretty standard requirement, and that any interior or exterior modifications would need to meet building code. No exterior modifications are proposed as part of the business. Interior modifications are proposed, and the applicant has been actively, proactively working with their building department to accommodate those changes within the site. Staff does recommend approval of the request, subject to the following conditions, that if there is a special event, parking for the special event must be accommodated with off-street parking on the building site or via a joint parking agreement. Sign permit will be required for any new signage and shall meet city code, and a building permit would be required for the tenant improvement. At this time, no exterior changes are proposed, again. With that, I'll stand for questions. Again, the applicant is in the audience. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dean.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, questions for staff? Would the applicant like to address the, address the commission? Please step up to the podium and give us your, welcome back.
Good to see you guys. Welcome. Thanks for having me. Good evening. CJ Woodrow, 8115th Century Boulevard, Chaska, Minnesota. Nice to see you guys again. Nice to meet you, met on the last time. I'm building across the street at 14265 West Burnsville. Parking, we did a lot of things to make sure we could accommodate, and they've gone very well over there, as well as special events as, as tryouts. We've cycled them, so they don't all come at once, they go in groups of 15, and they come and they leave, so that we have good traffic flow, everything. We made sure that worked, and it's worked very well. However, this building situation gives our customers, our families, and our business a better opportunity to be here for a very, very long time versus our current situation. It's a better business model, it's a better layout, it's a better parking scheme, it's better entry and exit, also off 42 and the backways versus the current way. It works well for parking, it just gives us a better option for our operations, so we want to make that change and be able to effectively move across the street.
Well, I think, I'm glad that you're, that you're going to stay in Burnsville, and I do know, I think Commissioner Singh and I both run the, we, that we worked through, and there was a joint agreement with the neighbors, and I, and I do believe this is a, is a much better setup for you.
Yeah, we won't, I mean, we, we work well with the landlord currently and the tenants as well, but it just, this mitigates a lot of that, and so we can kind of run our business without having to interfere, have to talk to other businesses to just run our business. So.
Mr. Benkey.
Yeah, I was not on the planning commission when that came through again. I'm sorry, where are you currently located?
So, we are, it's changed names a couple of times, but it's on the corner of 143rd Circle and West Burnsville Parkway. So, basically, a kitty corner from the Abdallah Chocolates.
Yeah.
Next to, I forget what the salon, I know they do the.
We'll call out the bellies.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
You're back in there.
Rock, Ark, and Ellie. So, right there in the white building.
Okay.
It's a nice place, has a lot of office that we don't use or need.
Sure.
The other place is mainly warehouse, which is what we do need.
Right. I actually live very close to this, and I guess, I'm trying to understand a little bit more about how you cycle through the, the groups, because your only way to exit that is right out of fairly busy intersection of West Burnsville Parkway.
Oh, the current one.
And, West Preserve and Judicial Road, I guess. Actually, Burnsville Parkway and Judicial Road. How many people are typically in your, in your groups?
For child's, for the special events?
I, I mean, yeah, because I, I'll be obviously looking at, well, not obviously, I'll be looking at worst-case situations. So, when you have your highest volumes coming through here, what kind of quantities of people are you looking?
We would have, we would have no more at 15 at any given time in the building. And the reason we do fif, cycles of 15 at any given time is that, especially with why we chose this building, and our other one, we're ready to make a special use with going in the front, leaving out the back. Similarly, because of the parking ability on the front and the back in this building and the side, is they can come in, park, enter the front, and then drop the kids off, go through tryouts in the building, leave out the side or the north and exit, and they can be picked up in the back open area and then leave out the back exit of the facility, so they can almost have a flow cycle.
Sure.
Instead of come, stop, turn, leave, so there's never a bottleneck.
So, I mean, are you doing the same thing here, then, or is it just simply have a front door and everybody uses the front door?
Nope, we have a front and rear exits. We made sure that was one of our biggest things we asked when we looked at the building, was the fire code. That's a huge thing, obviously, as a father of kids and working with kids. We've got to have exits, we've got to have fire code, a lot of concerns.
Okay.
Same, same process, same exits.
And generally, the times of day when you're having those kinds of worst-case events?
So, those, those tryouts, I mean, it happens three days the whole year. It's usually during spring break. Most people are out of town. That's when they can have their tryouts, because people are flexible with their times and their days, or they're on weekends. So, they're not going to be 3:00 to 6:00 on a weekday.
Okay.
It's going to be at night, so parents can get home, get their kids, get them there. We try to be as off-peak as possible, because otherwise, we can't serve clients.
Well, and quite honestly, your, your 8:00 to 9:00, or 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and 3:00 to 6:00 at night are, would be terrible for you to try to turn south at that time. And I could see people having issue with that. But if that, if you're not into that timeframe, then I, I don't think you're going to have much trouble.
No, and I can't get the business, because they won't bring their kids at that time either.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other questions? Commissioner Workman.
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow. Is there a proposal for signage? I tried, I did drive by last weekend. Obviously, you're not there yet, but I couldn't find, I, I guess I thought your location was right dead center of the building, because I think there was some numbers there, but I mean, ultimately, are you going to have some signage on the building?
Yeah, that's one of the things we asked, and I know that, that our landlord is working with the permits with the city and with fast signs, who's also a tenant in the building, which is kind of nice. We're obviously going to have the regular signage above our entrance, so people know where to enter, and with some glass signage more so. But then the main signage we've asked for, and I think it's with the city, with code and everything else, next to the dynamic gymnastics, so that it has 42 visibility. And they're either going to put a, an arrow or something that's basically, it's around the corner, so they know it's there. Ours is a destination location, we're not going to get traffic because you see it, but it's nice to know that we have that, so it's not totally tucked away, because we are in the north side of it. So, we are going to have two signs, one main signage that is per code, and we're making sure that, and by dealing with fast signs and with the city, that everything follows the law and everything is correct. We're, I think we're asking, because we have the current sign already, to just take it down and move it over. We're just trying to figure out, how do we modify it so that it meets code and everything is, I mean, it already was approved before, but we're trying to figure out if we want to have the same sign or not, but I know that our landlord and the city are working together to make sure everything's meeting spec.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, have a great night.
This does require a public hearing, so at this point, I will open the public hearing and ask anybody in the audience that would like to step up and give us their thoughts. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, your comments. Commissioner Benkey.
I would simply like to make a motion.
I would, I would stand for a motion.
I would ask that the planning commission recommend City Council approval of the CUP to allow the sports performance training center at the existing building located at 3250 County Road 42 West with the following three conditions as listed.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Benkey, second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. We appreciate you staying in Burnsville. I think this will be a much better location for you, and good luck. This will go in front of the City Council on June 21st. Thank you. Have a safe drive home. Item number five this evening also is a public hearing. The public hearing is to consider an ordinance opting out, this is something new for us also, this is a evening of new things, opting out of a recently passed legislation, Chapter 111, 216 Minnesota Sessions Law, requiring cities to permit temporary family healthcare dwelling units. Our presenter this evening, I got through that, is Ms. Garros, and Ms. Garros, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. For background information, the legislature this year took up an item that was, I think, has some good points, perhaps, but was not well executed, and they did not involve entities related to like building code, plumbing code, fire code, those types of things in coming up with this legislation. Basically, the bill was passed, and it requires, as, as written, requires cities to allow temporary accessory dwelling units. To give you an idea, kind of like if you seen on HGTV, the tiny homes type of a thing, somewhat similar to that, where these would be constructed, driven in on a specific truck, which the legislation identifies that, but doesn't identify how you deal with all sorts of other things. And basically, it was brought in, the city has to allow it. There is a minimum, I believe the city has up to 15 days to review these. We have to allow them the, basically what happens is you create for up to a six-month period with one option to renew that for an additional six months. You basically are creating two dwelling units on a lot where single-family is allowed. So, from that perspective, it does not meet the, the city's requirements. Also, because they did not include building officials and whatnot in this, the actual product that can be brought in does not meet any of those codes, which is problematic from the city's standpoint. The city did work very closely with the League of Minnesota Cities in opposing this legislation and trying to bring up, you know, the issues with it and the implementation. What happened is that the legislation was approved, but I think to get it approved, they added this opt-out condition, so counties and cities can adopt an ordinance to opt-out of the legislation. Kind of the idea behind it is so that if you have your single-family home and you have a relative that is ill, you have them stay in one of these facilities and until they're doing better. The difficulties with that are, number one, it puts the onus on the city to determine, are they related? How are they related? Are they ill? What do they actually have? A lot of those things, we aren't even allowed by law to investigate, because they're private. It's private by law, so just, the legislation was just not written very well. Some of the things that we need to look at is, they are, one of the, the issues with the legislation is they talk about things being a temporary conditional use permit. There is no such thing as a temporary conditional use permit. In the planning and zoning legislation, it clarifies the CUP, you cannot have them on a temporary basis. They run with the land, they're not temporary. That's an interim use permit. So, things even from various parts of the state statutes don't really fit together with this legislation. In addition to that, one of the issues is that we can have a permit fee for these, but it's limited to $100. That does not cover the city's costs for processing and application and doing the inspections. Also, this talks about hooking up to septic systems. Again, plumbing code and the way that Burnsville's code, because we are all in the metropolitan urban service area, you need to hook up to public utilities if they're available. So, these things, they just don't mesh with not only other codes and provisions, but with the way that Burnsville conducts business and does these things. So, with that, because of all of the issues, we have worked with League of Minnesota Cities. They have put together a draft ordinance to opt-out, and staff is recommending that the ordinance be adopted as presented, so that we are not stuck with a program that is virtually not workable on many levels. With that, I can see for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, your comments.
I was thinking of getting one of those tiny houses. Talking about changing the landscape. Talking about changing the landscape of our city. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think this is something that we need to support. I can't see this happening. Somebody, my neighbor, come put the small house behind their house for a relative, and you can't ask questions, what the relative, what illness, and I don't think, it's, it's a good idea, I think, but it's not ready for implementation. I think I need to go back to the, to the legislature, and the legislature needs to work with the other relative agencies and the League of Cities and with the plumbing people and the electrical people and so on, get it right before we can implement it in our city, so that's my contribution to this.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioners, other comments? Commissioner Benkey.
Given the industry I work in, I don't understand how this got signed.
Okay. Commissioner Benkey, thank you for your comments.
It's, it's that simple. It's, I can't imagine, working in residential construction, how anything like this could have gotten through the state government.
Commissioner Workman.
And it was a bipartisan agreement as well, which is even more surprising. I have a list of things that I would agree with staff's recommendation. I don't need to go through them, because I think we all kind of understand why we are not ready for this, so I would agree with the other commissioners that we're not ready for this in Burnsville.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. Commissioner Levy.
Considering one bill was passed with an or instead of an and, it doesn't surprise me that this got through.
Well, let's, let's have it relevant to this conversation, Commissioner Levy.
I fully agree with the staff that this is something that should not be allowed in Burnsville.
Commissioners, I would also have to agree with staff that I would be in support of us recommending to the City Council. I, I do think that the need is there, and I think the opportunity, as I think about the city in whole, we, we have, we have parts of the city, if you think about southwest Burnsville, rather large lots, and the, this kind of all-encompassing, and we deal a lot with lot lines and, and distance between homes from a zoning standpoint, let alone the other stuff in here that we typically don't deal with. And so, I definitely believe that as the, as our population ages, we are going to have to come up with creative ways to be able to address that. But I, I do believe, after meeting with staff and having several questions based around this, that this is currently our best option as a city, is to opt-out of this, and whether we make a decision to go back and look at this, or different legislation comes down the road, we can certainly bring it back in front of us, but that would also be my thoughts. Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
Public hearing?
Public hearing, that's true. This does require a public hearing, and at this point, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item to please step up and give us your thoughts. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, thank you very much. Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I, I moved that the planning commission recommend that the City Council approval of the ordinance opting out of allowing temporary dwelling units.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Singh, second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed say nay, and the motion carries 5-0. That brings us to number six, and updates. Commissioners, do you have any updates? Staff, Ms. Dean, I think you have an update for us.
I have an update about a Burnsville open house for the Bus Rapid Transit on Wednesday, June 15th.
Better known as the Orange Line?
The Orange Line, correct. Proposed Orange Line, as you may know, two stations are proposed in Burnsville, Nicolet and Burnsville Parkway is the second, and there's going to be an open house at the MVTA location from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on June 15th. I have some handouts for the Commission, and you're more than welcome to stop by, learn more about the project, there will be more to come. Basically, it's to go over the environmental process that they're going through, as well as to highlight these stations along the entire proposed alignment. Again, there's more to come, so.
And the line currently is planned to terminate in Burnsville.
Currently, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dean. Ms. Garros, anything else for you to add this evening? From way over there, typically you're right here.
I know, I didn't know how fast you were going to do that. Otherwise, I would have gone, John Dover. Yes, we do have our first comprehensive plan review panel meeting scheduled. We decided to go with, the first meeting would be on July 18th, which is, I believe, the, let's see, is it second or third Monday? One of the questions we had, though, is the time of the meeting, and we're asking for the Commissioner's input on when you would like to start. We are thinking initially 6:30, because that's when typical commissions start.
6:30 a.m. is fine.
Yeah. Some of the businesses, businesspeople and others have indicated that they are available to start earlier, such as 6:00 o'clock. Just looking for input from the Commission as to what time you'd like to start.
6:00. How long do the meetings typically, I guess it's been 10 years since we've had to do this, but.
Yeah, I believe that they're looking at about two hours, max.
6:30.
6:00 is fine, 5:30, 6:30, I'm, I'm open in that period.
Okay.
This, will this be televised?
These meetings will not, actually, we're going to have these meetings at least for this year, I believe, over at the Maintenance Center, just because there are not rooms available here at City Hall, so we'll send you details on, on that coming up here in the next week or two.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with 6:00, you guys?
6:00 is fine.
Sounds good. That's all right, thank you.
Does that, does that help, Ms. Garros?
That helps, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. That, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Workman, Commissioner Levy, seconded by Commissioner Benke. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much, and have a safe evening.
Thank you.